So we'll begin, if you look at your agenda, if you have a copy of it, on Coles Associates and 1280 Meadow Lane, we will not have those decisions this evening. Neither Coles nor 1280, which is the boathouse. On 2787 Milstein, 304 on Meadow Lane, we do have a decision.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
Second?
I make reference to the negative declaration and special permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
I move we accept this and considering the reference.
Second? We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had a few words.
You want a copy?
Yeah, if you could, I'd appreciate it.
On the application of case number 2789 Johnson, 19-7 on Meadow Lane, we also have a decision, and does that be the same?
Yeah, it'll be the same thing, the negative declaration and special permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
I move we accept this decision and reference the special environmental decision by our environmental fellow.
Second? All in favor? That takes us down to the pending cases, 2794 Old Town LLC. Well, we can just go on to the next one, and then when he's here, we'll do it. 2795 Matthew Stopnick, 40 North Main Street. Is nobody here for the applicant? Pull that one off and see if they show up. 2797 Richard Burridge, Sr., 408 First Neck Lane. They're moving along a lot more rapidly than I thought.
Yeah, no, that's, I don't have anything to... Yeah, this is the front yard tennis court, and I think the efficiency at the last time was sealed solely to get...
I don't think we closed the...
No, you didn't.
No, they... He submitted, you know, we adjourned it for all purposes because we asked them to submit a revised survey showing the structure by the tennis court. And he's done that, so we can close it for decision.
Okay.
I move we close this application for decision.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
On the application of 2799 GWB Southampton LLC,
For the applicant, David Gilmartin, Jr., Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. At the last hearing, it was pointed out by council that there's an error on our site plan, which we did correct. We added some relief to the application and notified the neighbors. I can run through the project again if the board wishes. I don't know if you want to be bored again by the presentation. Need more information, but this is the conversion of a noxious pre-existing non-conforming use to a multifamily residential project that's connected to Bishop's Pond. It's the property immediately to the south, better known as the Squires and Pearson piece. Your standard, as the board, is if it's better for the community. You know, I would submit that that's apparent. I can show you aerials. First aerial shows, this is the Bishop's Pond project, which was the Rambo pit. This is the Pearson piece here. That was prior to our purchase and construction of the Bishop's Pond piece. And this is a current picture of what the Bishop's Pond looks like most recently, and this is the Squires and Pearson piece. Our plan, as indicated, would have an entrance coming in from the Bishop's Pond piece to these multifamily buildings. There are 11 here. We've maintained this access, which is the current access for Squires and Pearson, only in case the planning board inquires it as an emergency fire entrance exit in the site plan process. So our hope that we will not have to keep that open and we close it up. An access would come from here down to the Pearson piece, and it would all be one piece. Currently, they're in two separate corporate names for legal purposes, but should the board wish and want to make it a condition, if you desire to approve it, we would agree to a condition that they merge into one piece. Again, I think that this is far better for the neighborhood of residential use instead of this noxious pre-existing non-conforming use. Can I answer any questions?
We do have a letter from a neighbor at 132 McGee Street. She seems happy that it's going to be occupied by condos rather than what it was in the past 30 years. Their only concern is that the water would be harmed. They have well water. And if my privacy were to be compromised.
I'm here. It's not 132. 132 is there.
Yeah, that's what's on the... You're actually in number 104, right?
Yeah, 104.
Yeah. South McGee Street.
South McGee Street, yeah.
It's our intent to hook into the sewage treatment plant that's currently a part of the Bishop's Pond project. That's how our sewage will be treated.
Do you like to speak to this one? Mine coming up. We need your name and everything for this.
Yes, my name is Joan Worthing, and my husband Bruce Dinsmore and I own the home south of this whole thing. It's a flag lot at 104 South McGee Street. And I've been there, we've been there since 1979. Seen a lot of changes, and I'm hoping that this will be the last and final wonderful change. You know, the dirt and the noise and the smell has gotten worse and worse over the years. So this will be a wonderful change. We are a little concerned of the privacy that we had in the flag lot back there. I don't know what the height, the... I think doesn't really let you know what the height level's going to be. Since I'm in the flag lot, we're a little bit higher, I think, than the guys in the front. And our property goes up in the back. And so I don't know how you're going to deal with it. If, I know that when we go up in the back of our property, the fence that's there is quite a bit in on our property line because the land drops. So we can't put the fence down where our property really is because it's in, it would be in the air. So I don't know how, what you're building up. I don't know if you guys want to put in a nice fence. That's fine, you know, at the property line. If you want to do landscaping, that would be, you know, trees that'll hide things on our property as well. We're fine with that. I don't know if we ever sell the house, you know, if someone else will mind, but they don't have to know you put them in. And so we're willing to work with you guys and just hoping that the land's not going to be up above, and we're going to have these big, you know, towering things looking over our property. And that was our major concern, I think. Oh, we were also curious what the stockpile bunkers are that are in this. I don't know if this is like a turnaround thing that's here, that that is?
That's the turnaround for the...
For like big trucks or whatever?
We have to talk to the board.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, yeah, I was wondering what this, if that's going to be buildings there for trucks or if it's for sand for, or whatever. I don't know. That's about it, I guess. Thank you.
You have any response to that?
Yeah, just, you know, we'll take care of screening. It's our intent to fully screen ourselves from our...
Have to go before the planning board, too.
Yeah, and that's, the landscape plan will, I can assure you, will be equal, if not better, than what's at the Bishop's Pond because of the locations of the surrounding structures. I think what the speaker was referring to was this turnaround, which we have to provide for fire trucks and emergency. These are the structures. So this is, this is the asphalt to turn around, the access, and then these are structures here.
In other words, if they come in on one, they got to be able to turn if they can go out the other.
Right.
Okay.
What are the stockpile bunkers?
The turnaround for emergency vehicles.
Oh, it's still, it's just a block.
And we'll fully address that in the site plan process.
Just so the neighbor is aware that this project will eventually have to go before the village planning boards for a site plan review, landscape screening, and those kind of details. This board ordinarily leaves for the planning board to address. We're involved primarily in the use rather than the details of the site.
Does anyone else would like to be heard in this application? If what?
We need to keep it open because we will eventually, I believe, the applicant plans to do a coordinated secret review with the planning board. But before that can happen is a couple of loose ends that have to be dealt with in terms of secret procedure. So we should adjourn it for all purposes. If we don't have any more questions at the next meeting, we can start to address the secret procedure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion?
I move we close for all purposes.
Adjourn for all purposes.
Adjourn for all purposes. I'm sorry.
Second? All in favor? I think we can now go back to Old Town LLC. I believe he's here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Keane. I'm the developer for Old Town on the corner of Old Town Road and Wicca Pog. If you recall, I was here last month requesting a permit. We're fairly relieved on some of your sign requirements, and we had to get additional information. Just to refresh your memory, we're here asking for relief on the size of the signs, the fact that the signs will be, two of the signs will be perpendicular, not parallel, as well as the amount of signs on one lot, which was the question last, last hearing. And so we've revised our application to reflect all the above. We, as you know, we're, we've got a 50-plus, or plus or minus 50-acre site with almost 3,000 feet of road frontage, and therefore, we are asking for additional signs so that you can see where the property is and what it's all about. It's been a property that's been underway for quite some time. We've recently taken it over and are trying to get people to be aware that we're putting new houses up in there. One of the questions that the village attorney had was whether or not the covenants and restricts, covenants and restrictions on the property, were we precluding us from putting up any signs? We've given you evidence that, no, there are no restrictions on that. We've also checked with the approvals of that particular map, and there were no restrictions on that as well. We have here with me the evidence of the mailings. I believe you've got photo of what the sign will look like, and I assume you've got the locations of the sign on your map as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Got two letters. One from a neighbor at Wicca Pog. Duran Phillips Flynn, 145 Wicca Pog. And she's opposed to the application. Gives a few reasons. Increased traffic, the speed limit, cars won't see the signs. And she's also asking for a legal address on this application. Evidently, she contacted the village with the address that you gave, which is number 64 Wicca Pog. They told her that there is no such address.
Can't answer that.
I don't know what the address is of those 50 acres.
I don't know off the top of my head either.
Well, I mean, it's not 64 Wicca Pog, according to...
Apparently not.
And she also sent a letter to you to the post office, and has returned from the post office as address unknown.
Okay.
And we have a letter from the building inspector, Jonathan Foster, who feels that the proposed three signs are appropriate and will help the many suppliers and construction crews to better locate the proposed new construction sites that are recreating less wear and tear on the village road systems from major trailer equipment and suppliers turning around looking for the specific sites. Got the approval of the building inspector and opposition from one neighbor.
And I think, just to answer one of the questions, that the opposition from the neighbor, that's why we're making the signs larger so that you're not slowing down to a point where you can barely see it. So I would hope that this sign, being the size that we've given you, will better help people see it as they go by and not have to pull over and strain to see it.
She also says that the reason this property is not sold has nothing to do with the quantity and size of its signage.
Well, that may be true.
As far as the legal address, I don't know what we can do about that.
Yeah, I think we should probably put our office as the legal address, if any, for any mailings or anything. We probably, we've been, we were given 64 Wicca Pog, but no one's living there, so I don't know if, it's just where it was going. But that, I guess, is the technical address of the property.
Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard in this application? Do you need anything more, Rick?
Well, there's a lady that wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on, please.
Hi, I'm Duran Flynn, who wrote the letter in opposition of the application. And first, I did receive a letter of this meeting tonight, but it said that there were going to be seven signs on the property, and I thought there were three. I didn't bring the letter with me. I don't know.
Oh, three?
So I just wanted to double check on that.
It's three signs.
Three signs.
Okay, because the letter said seven.
I believe there was a typo I was called in.
Okay. Okay. I want to, I reiterate, I want to confirm that, you know, when the property was first sale in the beginning, there was a sign on the corner of Old Town Road and Wicca Pog Road that met the sign law. And I don't think there was any problem seeing that sign. There's not a lot of traffic down Old Town Road. Most of the traffic comes down and turns left on Wicca Pog Road. Most of the people who are interested in purchasing that property go through real estate agents and really don't go driving around. And again, according to my letter, the speed limit on that road is 25 miles an hour. So if they're, and Old Town Road is 25 miles an hour also. So if they're turning down Wicca Pog at 30 or even 35 miles an hour, I mean, the signage that was there before was seen. And I'm concerned because it is a residential area. And I really am opposed to a lot of signage. And that's really my complaint. Know that I've talked to a few neighbors on my street who didn't show up tonight because they're pretty exhausted with opposing certain things in the village that go unheeded. So they've kind of given up. So I'm the only representative of the neighborhood, although there are a few other neighbors that if you want me to, I can go to, and they can probably sign a petition against this. And I'm not the only one on the, on the block. That's what I'm saying, so.
We realize these signs will not be there forever. These are not permanent signs.
Well, they thought that the... They thought that the lots were going to be, I mean, they thought it was going to be sold in 2007.
Let me just clarify one thing in terms of the nature of the application, because this was talked about at the last hearing, but I, you probably weren't here. They could actually have more signs than they're asking for on the overall property because there are other building lots.
Right.
And they're proposing to put the signs in the locations where they are. If, if it's granted, the board would impose a condition that they can't have signs on the other lots.
Well, the other lots are not seen. They're inside the property and it's private road.
Some of them are on Wicca Pog Road.
Well, there's only two lots on Wicca Pog Road plus the Homeowners Association corner with the wildflower forest or field. So if there is three signs, I'm assuming one is going to be on Wicca Pog, and one is going to be on the corner of Wicca Pog and Old Town, and one is going to be on Old Town.
Between the, you know, all I'm trying to say is, between the lot, the two building lots on Wicca Pog and the parcel that they're proposing to put the signs on, they could have three signs on those three parcels. But they're proposing to put them all on the corner parcel with none on the building lots.
Okay. Well, you know, like I said...
I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
If you all want to have, like, a lot of signs on Wicca Pog and Old Town to sell this property, then you have the prerogative to accept this. I'm just saying, it's a residential street. It's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. And, you know, I don't think the signage is the reason why the lots didn't sell before. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I don't know, I don't think we need three signs. Maybe we need two. And I think we should consider that these signs might be there for 30 years. I mean, if there's only one lot left, are we going to have three large signs sitting there forever and ever? Can they be weeded out when you sell two or three lots? Can you remove one sign? I mean, what, where's it, what's the story here?
First of all, I want to clarify, the signs are 2' 8" by 4' 1/8" inch. Approximately this by this. It's not like we're putting billboards up here. This is a project that has been stagnant for quite some time, and maybe the woman is correct. Maybe the reason the lots didn't sell is because they had one little tiny sign on the property. We're looking to try to create some activity for the sales.
That's what the lady said?
She just said there was one sign up, and she felt that that was sufficient. But in her letter, someone just asked me before, do you think the signs will sell the property? And I think the fact that we, you know, there, it has not sold. And so we're trying a different approach. And I think that the, I don't think we're being egregious given the fact that we have a 50-acre property. We have 3,000 feet of road frontage. We're trying to get some attention to the property. Our intention is not to have them up for 30 years. I can assure you, I will not be building here in 30 years from now. But we, we want to get some attention to get this project going and get it jump-started. And again, I don't think we're asking for signs that are that large. These are, we really tried to keep it within a reasonable size. And again, you're talking about, you know, a little over two feet, like four feet. It's not...
Well, we don't have signs like that in the village. One, can we have a sunset on these signs?
It's your prerogative. I just, you know, we ask for reasonableness. We're trying to move a very, very large piece of property and has had a very hard go. And so we'd like every opportunity to be able to make it successful.
I have no problem with this. I don't, you know, I think the signs are fairly reasonable. At some point, those lots will be sold. If this hastens the selling of those lots, then so be it, you know? It has been stagnant for a while.
Many years.
I'm sure they're putting a whole lot of money into this. People there all the time doing something with those wildflowers and just the lawn cutting alone. And you do have an open view there. Hedges were put up at one time, and then they were taken down.
I wasn't involved in that.
I know. That's by the previous ownership.
But we do spend an enormous amount of money taking care of those gardens and those lawns, et cetera. I don't, you know, again, it's your choice. However, I don't see this to be obtrusive or, you know, I think it's going to, it's going to blend in very, very well. I mean, we've done them with, you know, they're black signs. They're not big white signs. I think we tried to do it as tastefully as possible. But again, it is, it is a very important aspect of the project. We're not going to have real estate signs hanging all over the place.
Jim, you have any thoughts on this? Please come up. So you have to be on the camera so we can see you on Channel 22.
The property has not been listed with a real estate agent or has been on the market since, I'm not, I don't remember exactly when, either 2010 or 2011, they were trying to develop a spec house on the pond and sell that one property to get things going. So really, the, the way property gets sold in Southampton is through real estate agents. And the price of the property, I mean, I don't know what the pricing is now, but the pricing used to be the same as you could buy a house on the oceanfront. So, you know, the price was too high. The market went down and out. I mean, that was the reason it didn't sell. It didn't sell because people didn't know about it or there wasn't enough signage to sell the property. And, you know, I respect the signage laws of Southampton. Everybody's worked very hard to do studies and investigations and considerations, and a lot of thought went into the size and quantity of signage in Southampton Village. And I respect that. And I think this is going to open up a lot of different developments and properties and residential areas that are going to ask for larger signage. And I, I don't see there a need to be.
Well, we handle each case as being unique.
That's correct, but it's going to set up...
Mis-unique. And the other one that comes before us will also be handled as being unique.
Right, but it's going to set a precedence. So that's why this is an important vote. But again, I, I, you know, I don't think that the reason this property didn't sell was because people didn't know it was for sale. The people who are buying that kind of property know about it.
It may have been too high-priced, and it may have hit the market just at the wrong time.
Well, yeah, exactly. But it wasn't because of the signage. And bigger and better signage is not going to sell the property. And, and I understand that every board in Southampton Village, including myself, who lives across the street, I want the property to be developed. It was going to raise my property value, you know? But like signage, you know, quantity of signage, largeness of signage is going to deteriorate it. I mean, I think if they could take the chains off the trees and renew, renew, remove the snow posts and make it a little more friendly property, that could help too, you know? I mean, there's a lot of things that could help sell the property. Getting the real estate agents on board to promote it again and go for it, that could help sell the property. But doing bigger and more signage is, I don't feel is going to sell the property. But again, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Jim, you have any on this?
On the outside, I don't have a problem with it. I don't, I don't think the signs are that large. And plus, if you could sign each piece of property, you know, on the road.
Harry?
I don't have any comment one way or another.
Rick?
Might as well closer for decision.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do we have people here from Matthew Stotnick yet? No, okay. So we'll go down to 2800 Recam Holdings LLC, 51 Pond Lane.
For the applicant David Gilmore Jr. file, Fred's 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. At the last hearing, the board asked for additional information, which I submitted earlier in the week. However, I got the message wrong on the night of the hearing, so I'm submitting now surveys of the existing conditions. If the board remembers, they're taking what is an existing cottage that's in a non-conforming location and moving it to the rear of the property to a conforming location. I would submit that the evidence we presented last time, that there's a benefit to the neighborhood, actually making it conforming as opposed to non-conforming, is in the spirit of the zoning code. If there are any questions, further questions, we can answer them.
Okay, so you're gonna take this cottage?
You can get those back for the file. I, I have one already, but he gave me one today.
And you're gonna move it?
Correct.
Is that the idea?
Yes. At our last hearing, our engineer, Stephen Mansky, appeared and described moving the cottage, the actual cottage itself, to the rear. They're not gonna.
The reason you need the variance is gonna be too close to the, to the northerly line?
No, it's, it's being moved to a conforming location. It was the building department.
Right now, it's too close to the northerly line?
Correct, correct. And we're moving it to a conforming location. It was the building department's interpretation that we need a variance to do that.
Need a variance just to move it to a conforming location?
Because it's a guesthouse.
Huh?
Because it's a guesthouse.
It's a guesthouse, okay. So it's there, and it's gonna be there, but it's gonna be in a conforming location, whereas now it's not in a conforming location.
That's correct.
Do we have any questions from the board on this?
Not I.
No. Do we have any around here on this, like, for this application? Yes.
Hello, my name's Susan Sherry Clark, and I live in the village, and I don't wanna address the particulars of it, but I would just ask that you keep it open until the ARB makes whatever decision they're making about the main dwelling. It might make a difference about the cottage, so I just ask you to keep it open until that decision's made.
Why would it make a difference about the cottage?
Pardon?
Why would it make a difference about the cottage?
Because if the main dwelling remains, then most likely the cottage will remain in the same place. If it has any historic value, which some people believe it does, I don't wanna get into the particulars of that. It's more important that it stays.
The house, the proposed house is not before this board, so.
Right, I know that, but even the cottage itself dates back pretty far. If it stays in its religion or location, it has more value historically than if it's moved. And also, if there are any type of artifacts, once, if that's moved, they may be lost. So if you, we could, if you could please wait until the ARB makes their decision, and then I'd appreciate it.
David, is the cottage gonna be moved, whether or not the building is gonna be taken down or not taken down?
Yes, and the cottage was raised as an issue during that, as an aside, because I don't think it's any part of, of this board. The cottage was raised as an aside. The village's historical architect, Zach Student Roth, did a full inspection of the house and the cottage, interior and exterior. There is no historical value to the cottage. It will be moved no matter what. And I, you know, I think it's better that it be moved from the non-conforming location, but it'll be moved. I would ask that you close this. The, the ARB application has nothing to do whatsoever with this application.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Move? Rick?
Uh, no, there were a couple of other questions that I raised at the last meeting, and the written submission that they made earlier this week addresses those. They concede that this is an accessory cottage or a guesthouse, not a main dwelling, and they've submitted information showing that the right-of-way is not a private road. It's a driveway easement to the parcel to the, behind it. So, all, I, all my questions have been answered, so we can adjourn for decision.
So moved. Second. One favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Chick, did you want some file that I had?
Actually, I was able to talk to the applicant in the audience, so I have the information.
Okay. It relates to the first one that we have on the new cases, eh? The application of case number 2805, Ken Fox, 472 First Neck Lane.
Hi, Dean Gamolka, landscape architect, representing 472 First Neck. We pre-submitted these drawings to Chick for review and comments. Basically, simply, we'd like to remove the phragmities along our waterfront on Agwam and replant with native species. Bayberry, switchgrass, little blue stem iris. And we would like to retain a six-foot swath to the water's edge. Currently, there's, this is all grass going to the water.
And you wanna retain that as grass?
Hopefully, to come back to maybe get a permit for a dock.
Good. Extra for the file.
There's Russian olive, lanasura, roses, Rosa Sharon, all invasives that we wanna take out along with the phragmities and replace with native vegetation. There's a little snag. I've added all these things in color on top of what I submitted.
Chick, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah. So, so Dean, the intent of this is to remove the phragmities and remove other invasive species in the grassed area? Because I think one of the plans shows, you vexed out a lot of the invasive species that are there now.
And then we have privet hedge and lilac, the lanasura in the, in the bubblehead area.
Right, and those are also specified to be removed, I believe.
Right.
What is, when you say hand removal of phragmities, what is the method for doing that?
We pull them out. I mean, if we could go in there with an excavator, that's cool too, but.
Well, a lot of the time, what we've seen is it's very difficult to pull them out because the rise zones are so extensive. But repeated cutting over a number of seasons will stunt them, and also, in many cases, allow other native plants to come in once you expose, expose that area to light. So I think you may wanna, you know, look into a method that would give you the success that you're looking for, and perhaps a repeated cutting method might be a little bit better.
Okay.
I can provide you some literature on that. We could, we could certainly correspond with the board's permission, and I'd be happy to provide that. I didn't hear anything as far as explanation about the core log.
There is the.
I see an area that that's proposed, and if you could just explain the purpose?
It's more of to, to make sure that during construction, we don't have any, any of the soil going into the, into the pond. Also, there is, there is a bulkhead, an old bulkhead there, and some places that bulkhead is broken. So I just thought it'd be a little more efficient to make sure that we keep all that soil intact on the, on the site.
Mm-hmm. And I kinda, I see the area, first of all, I flagged the wetlands, I think it was last March.
And the triangles are on the plan.
Yeah, so that's good. So I, I see the area seaward of the wetlands as being, you know, that's the wetland area. So you're looking to restore that by removing phragmities and establishing a better quality native species. So I don't see anything about replanting to, to, you know, encourage new native species to come in. So again, we can, we can correspond about that.
A lot of this is underwater, you know?
Yeah, and I guess, again, you know, repeated cutting of phragmities, you may be able to get other water iris. You may be able to get some other species to come in.
I do have, okay.
That would help to outcompete the phragmities. And then I see the area landward of the wetlands a little differently. We understand that it's lawn all the way down to the lake, and it's conditions like that that impact the lake. In other words, from runoff and fertilizers and nutrients entering the lake. And actually, I think there was a bloom just this fall, even though the aerators are working and everything else. So whenever possible, we try and establish some type of a, a little bit more extensive native plant buffer. So while it's very good that you have the bayberry and other species proposed, if we could establish kind of a setback, you know, maybe like a 25 or a 30-foot area, that we would just have native plants.
We are.
And maybe maintain that annually if necessary to maintain native grasses or something like that. That would be consistent with what the board has done on other applications.
I mean, we're just asking to help the Agwam Lake Association with removing the phragmities, not to come in 30 feet on the property as of yet. You know, we may have plans down the road to address that, but, I mean, right out of the gate, that's to come up 30 feet. I mean, I have planted the hell out of this.
Yeah, and I'll make the observation.
Just for taking out the phragmities along the, the lake's edge.
Yep, I'll make the observation that you're not proposing anything in the upland area. You know, you're not looking for any relief. It's really just a native plant program. So whatever you're doing here.
Mr. Fox hates phragmities, so he knows that you guys hate phragmities, and that's basically impetus of this, of this plan.
Yep. Whatever you do here, I do see as an improvement. So, it's a request. There is some literature that I can also give you.
It's also a request of the neighbor as well.
Mr. Fox.
Just a minute, please. You'll have a chance to speak.
And what I'll also do is provide you with a pamphlet that we put together for the village that, you know, talks about the potential impacts to the lake and how it can be improved. And so it's just something to consider. I think you had talked about native switchgrass also.
Yeah, blue stem, it's just, I mean, it's almost a meadow going on along this, this edge.
Yes, and that's exactly what, what I'm referring to. So, you know, all an improvement. It looks good. Let's get the phragmities so that that will work. The woody shrub planting looks, looks very good. I do see the 546 square feet of new lawn, and just wanna ask, what, what's that referring to?
Well, this is an area where there's Rosa Sharon, privet hedge. It's just a clump, lanasura in this area. So we're just taking those non-natives out and putting grass there.
Grass as opposed to, again, not, not native species, but something that would be maintained?
So we thought it'd be nice if we would continue the vocabulary of the Agwam Lakefront with our property. Take out, you know, those old school invasives.
Yeah. Okay. Well, again, my, my main comments are, let's make sure the phragmities restoration works. Anything you're giving upland is an improvement. I'll provide you with a pamphlet. We can talk a little bit more if there's anything more that can be done to ensure that we don't have lawn right up to the lake, so the nutrients enter the lake. And, again, it's, it's, overall, it's a benefit, so as long as we tune it up a little bit, I don't expect I'd have a problem with it.
Okay, great.
Yes, if you wanna come up, please come up to the microphone.
Dean, how are you? So I guess I'm the one being volunteered to do this, though.
Okay.
My parents are the neighbors at 468 First Neck Lane, which basically is the piece of land you can see is that, the little L-shaped piece here. So as you can see.
On the same right-of-way.
Exactly. So as you can see, any work that's done in the cove area is significantly impactful to their views, which basically cut across this way. And so there were just four or five requests they had. Request one is really around the 300-foot core log retaining wall. That that retaining wall, right now, is being held in the plans by every, there's 10-foot, every 10 feet, there's stakes and wire fencing, and there's nowhere in the plan that we could see when we reviewed it that in fact, that it was temporary and not.
It's just the, it's a silt fence that comes down after construction. So we have the core log, the core log, and there's a silt fence, and it's being reinforced by a wire fence. It's just so it doesn't flop around and fails.
Comes down after you finish.
It all comes down.
But it doesn't say that.
But that's, that's, it's a silt fence. A silt fence comes down.
And the guard wire, but there's two. You have the guard wire, you have the silt, right? And then what's underneath it is something that says it's a guard wire fence.
It's a wire fence to help support the silt fence. You know, you could have soil or something.
Yeah, okay, so our understanding is it's temporary, and how long does temporary last?
As soon as Chick feels that everything is rooted in and we're not gonna endanger Agwam Lake. So it could be a couple of months.
Estimate, two months, you think?
So if we get the, I don't know.
Well, the core log will biodegrade once it's in place. So the silt fence is really just to make sure we don't have sediment going into the lake while they're disturbing the land. So typically, you would remove it once the upland area is stabilized. In other words, the ground cover is established, and you're not gonna have loose sediment that can erode into the lake. So I think Dean's assessment that a couple of months, if it's during a growing season, is accurate.
And if it's during a non-growing season?
Well, we're gonna wanna start in March if we get the approvals.
Might leave it in place longer, but we wanna time it so that you do the planting when you have a growing season and it gets established.
Okay, so that was sort of request number one. The second request, clearly you've now addressed, Dean, which was the last time when we went by the building office, there wasn't a view of the plantings. I guess the question here is really the height of the plantings. Don't want the bayberry and things like that to be high. We had not actually been able to review the plan of the plantings. That's now here.
There are bayberries on the site that have been there probably for like the last 50 years.
Right, that's true. I'm aware of those. I've actually lived there for those last 50 years.
I'm not questioning that, but they've been windsheared.
Right.
You know, so the bayberry, if you let it go, it could go like 20 feet.
So what are little?
Are dwarfed, that, they're like eight feet, 10 feet high.
So just so I understand it, along here, what's being planted here?
Well, we have irises. These are all little growing, there's carrots. They're just water plants that are helping to hold the soil in place. The iris that you have all along, and then we have switchgrass and there's some plants in here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Dean, why don't you, yeah, why don't you show?
We have an extra one here if you want to.
And this I emailed to you, this is the context of, you know, what we're hoping, that, that is bayberry.
Yeah, and the concern was that that was quite high. That would really obstruct the view of the lake, as you can see.
Well, that's a conscious point. It's pretty much not getting hit with ocean winds and the rest of it.
Okay. So that was area number two, to make certain that the plantings were not too high.
You know, the phragmities right now are, you know, good 12 feet high. And if, you know, we wanna plant comparable to that, maybe, you know, eight feet to help, you know, from our vantage point, we're looking right at the parking lot at the beach club. So we're just trying to help mitigate that on our end.
Yes, I think the, the question just is not to completely obscure the view going out from here. So if you look at this plan, the more that you're planting along this wall, right, is, this shoreline is really starting to obscure the view of the lake.
You know, I was there with the owner the other day. You can't see the lake at all because the, the phragmities, they have to be almost eight feet thick.
From the second floor, you can see them, though, I think.
I haven't been in your, I haven't been invited yet.
Okay, you will be. If this project goes well and if it's done before the summer's over. Then the next thing is, we went by the Evans, which you showed us was a comparable. They're using multiple core logs stacked, one on top of the other. Would you anticipate doing that?
No, we have.
It's truly only one? It's truly only one, so it's not going to be up high?
That's it, because there, there is a bulkhead there. I'm just being, I wanted to pass this in one night, so I put that thing in there.
Okay. You wanted to, huh? And then, subsequent to this, is there going to be work done on the cove side, or is this really it for the cove side?
The owner right now is, is concentrating on the planting. He doesn't know if he's going to stay there for more than five years. He doesn't know. It's up in the air, he doesn't know. But is it, I think it's a historic building, and it's not really much, you know, I don't-
I was talking more about the planting even, like, so I know there might be a structure here, right, a dock here?
Possibly.
Potentially, but over here, nothing, right?
No.
Okay.
This is where, you know, we could get a dock, because we're asking for that access. We'd have to come back to these guys again if we want to put it in a different spot.
Yeah, it's really the cove side, there's nothing else contemplated right now on the cove side. And then, just warning before the work begins, a couple weeks' warning, and then also duration of the work, a sense of how long that's going to be?
We will go in there with an army and knock it out. I mean, it's, you know, weekends are everything for this person, so we're not going to be hanging out.
And then the last thing is, the months of July and August, you're hopefully going to be done before that?
I have to convince the village that this is a good project and hopefully we're going to start in March.
Okay, but the idea, the ideal would be not to have this big of an effort going on in the front lawn during the months of July and August.
No.
And the growing, excuse me, the, the growing season, you'd really want to have everything planted by the middle of June, I would say.
We'd have guys watering all summer, everyone you do, if we did in July.
That was, those were our five things. We also know that another neighbor to the other side, David Bonnet, who is actively involved in lockup-
We have his letter here in front of me.
He wanted to be certain that we mentioned the setback for-
He's at 496 First Neck Lane?
You got it.
Yeah, he seems to think that the, the activity is good in certain ways, but he does have some concerns about the, about the buffer zone you had mentioned of native plantings. And he'd also like to see advance notice on the schedule to the work proposed. So he's got concerns, which you just mentioned about when and how long, and what Chick just mentioned about the buffer.
So just to, not to belabor this, but, you know, we just want to help in remove the fragmites. So am I to go back to my client and say that the village wants a 30-foot buffer off the wetlands, just to take out the fragmites? It's not like we're putting an addition on the house or doing anything at this point where, you know, that would warrant such a-
Chick, do you think it's absolutely necessary, do we do it now, or?
Well, I, I think my observation was that they're not proposing anything, they're not requesting relief, anything they do is an improvement. However, as a good neighbor on the lake, you know, definitely not having lawn going right up to the lake would be a good thing. And I know that Mr. Bonnet-
At the moment, I think I-
Personally participated in a lot of the discussions when the Lake Agwam plan was being prepared. So I, I would say if you would appeal to your client, if there is some setback that they could live with, I think it would be much better for the lake-
So in this-
Which is good for them.
In these two spots, or it's like five feet wide, if I just fill them in with the same, I guess, music that I have going on here, would that suffice? Opposed to me going back and say, you know, we're going to, they want us to come up 30 feet on the property-
Right.
Just to take out the fragmites, he's, I'm going to get thrown out of his office.
Whatever we can achieve would be better. Definitely filling in those areas would be good.
Okay.
And maybe look for a 10-foot strip that would be native grasses, you know, stay low, cut them once a year, but that way, at least you have that absorption and biofiltration of any runoff coming off the fertilized parts of the lawn.
That sounds fair, great.
You'll see if you're able to do that. If you can get back to us with that?
I will.
And I'll speak with Mr. Demolka, provide him a copy of the pamphlet to share with his client, and whatever we can exchange before the next one.
Something else, do you?
Great.
Do that much closer.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I'll send this on up to you.
Anybody else in the audience like to hear this application?
Would you like this for your records?
Oh, I might as well.
Therefore, we'll hold this open, right? So we hear back from clients representing-
I can give you a-
I'm going to hold this application open for purposes.
Second, all in favor?
Five.
Forty-five. Hmm.
Where'd this one come from?
That came from that lady.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Keep that open?
Yes, we kept it open for all purposes.
What's the next step on the one from our neighbors? Is the next step, is it, is it approved, or what's the next step?
Next step, we're holding it open to see if we can get back to his client-
Okay.
And perhaps get a little bit of a buffer.
It'll be on the agenda for further hearing on-
So we'll be hearing it again next month.
December 19.
December 16?
December 19.
19, got it, thank you.
Look, we don't want to be a bad neighbor, but at the same time, if they plant high, you know, we've lived in that house for 50 years, and, and really, what we don't want is to have the cove ugly and to, to, because that's what we look at. And our view of Lake Agwam completely locked down.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll send it. Thank you all.
Good night. That brings us up to case number 2801, number 7 James Street LLC, 7 James Street.
Good evening, Mary Janisato, Burke's Land and Management, 21 South Main Street for the applicant. I have the affidavit of posting, the affidavit of mailing. The variance application for you tonight is essentially a variance to a front yard setback, a technical front yard setback of 29.6 feet to construct an accessory garage, a separate accessory garage on this property. The property is conforming, in fact, it's over 21,000 square feet, so it's in the yard of 12.5 zone, certainly has enough acreage. It is currently approved with a single-family dwelling with an attached garage that has a second story. If you look at the survey, you'll notice that the wing that we're talking about is 29.6 feet. It steps back a little bit, but the building that's there, the two-story house with the attached garage that's two stories, is all non-conforming. It's non-conforming with respect to James Street. What's being proposed is, is that that building be taken down. This is actually the area in question, the two-story part which has the garage and the, with a second story, that contains two bedrooms and a bathroom. No disco hall, though. Since that is so large, what I can do is, I'll submit for the record, black and white, if you would pass it around. It really is a black and white, smaller photograph, so it goes in the record of, of this photograph here. So as you can see, we have an existing garage, and we have living space over it. All of this is at 29.6 feet, double story. We're proposing to take that down and build a new house in a conforming location in all respects, and build an accessory detached garage where this building is 29.6 feet, but it's going to be 520 square feet, which is conforming as far as the square footage of an accessory building. It's only going to be 16 feet in height, so that's going to be conforming as well for the accessory building. And if you look at the survey, there's extensive parvity already on the property line, as well as other screening. And since it's being reduced in height, the visibility of this building is not going to be, in fact, it's going to be reduced, is I submit to you. I would like to pass out the floor plans of the building, which are a smaller size of elevation, but here is the east elevation for the-
Garage.
For the garage. It's conforming in all respects, including the side yard with the neighbor. The only variance we're asking, which is, is to maintain that setback from James Street. But I submit to you, it's reducing the nonconformity because it's coming down in mass, it's coming down in square footage, it's coming down in height. This is the, this is the north elevation, but it's exactly, the south elevation is exactly the same. So there's windows there, it's low profile, and I submit to you, I went and drove by the site there, from the neighbor, you're not going to be able to see this. In fact, what's there now is heavily screened, but as I said, by having it come down and low profiled, it's going to be less visible. As you can see, that it's going to be substantially shorter than this, and it's certainly going to be cut down in mass along James Street. It has been, this application has been for the Architectural Review Board. I can submit to you, it was presented by Brian Brady, the designer for the project. It is my understanding at the last hearing, they gave a conditional approval, subject to the applicant submitting actual building drawings that were reflective of the design drawings. There was apparently some discrepancy on the main building, nothing to do with the garage, on the front entry steps, that they wanted the drawings revised. So as far as the locations, the massing, the site plan, it is my understanding that the ARB did not object to either the design or the spacing. The character of the neighborhood is a non-conforming house on an oversized lot. We are reducing all of the nonconformities, I submit to you. We're not changing the character of the neighborhood. As far as the accessory dwelling, I point, remind the board that the village code actually encourages detached accessory garages versus attached for the massing purposes. There is certain, actually, leeway and relief given if you agree to have a detached garage versus an attached garage, as far as the areas are concerned, as you well know. So if you balance and weigh here, I actually spoke to the client about either adding on to a conforming location on, you know, conforming additions, that by reducing all of the nonconformity except this small linear foot that we submit to you, that really, the weighing and balancing, that the harm to the neighborhood and to the village versus the benefit to the applicant is, it swings in the applicant's favor. The applicant has the right to maintain what is there and add on to it in a conforming location. And basically, what's coming here is reducing and taking out most of the nonconformities that existing on this property.
Is there any reason why the garage can't be moved back, really, to the west?
He indicated to me that it created a space, I mean, Mr. Brady says that it makes the space between the two accessory buildings really tight and creates an imbalance. I can, if you want that to be addressed further, he was not able to attend tonight.
I mean, if you moved it back so it was in line with the front of the house? We have two letters, at least two letters from the neighbors, and their objection is the garage being detached, even though it's the same distance from the street that the attached garage is, it looks more pronounced because it's not attached. In other words, it sticks out more because it's detached, being so close to the street. We've got a letter from Diane Gradian, and one from the Essays, Richard and Connie Essay. And I believe they have an attorney here tonight that's also going to speak.
And the Essays?
Essays, Richard and Connie Essay, they live down the end of the street there.
Well, if they move the garage to line up with the house, there would be, what, a four-foot spread between a pool house and a garage, or it'd be not much?
Yeah, I mean, I have a board here for that. Here, here's the board. The house is being put at a conforming location and is being stepped back at 40 feet, and-
That's what's required, 40 feet.
That, that's what's required. The conforming location for this would be 50 feet for, for a detached garage. So that creates a real spatial problem here.
What does 50 feet do to it?
Which actually leaves-
Put it up against the-
Yep, up against the pool house.
And what does lining it up with the front of the house do?
Uh, I, I was, I was-
And we make it 40 feet back, right?
That would be 40 feet back, and I was, I was advised by the, as I said, by the design, Brian Brady, that that creates a real, it's like a small alleyway between the two buildings.
And you can't move the pool house back too much, I guess.
Can you move the pool house back?
The impact, I mean, this is a conforming setback, as, as, as here. This is already pre-existing, I mean, this is conforming, this is conforming. Actually, the roof line is going down here, the visibility from this side is, is decreasing. I mean, as I showed you, it's two stories. And this whole line, which is about here, is all being stepped back, and only this short side is actually staying. They didn't, you know, we're not talking about a broadside here. It's 520 square feet. It's at the, getting no closer than the existing. It's coming down in height.
Well, it's coming down in height, of course, it isn't part of the house anymore.
Yeah, I, I actually, but what I'm saying-
The attached garage is part of the house, it ruins about it.
So.
Let me, let me ask you this, on the north elevation, there's a line that says maximum height allowed, and that cupola is going over that, on the north elevation of what you have ended in.
Oh, that, that's for the height, the cupola apparently doesn't count.
Well, it counts visually, that's for sure. That's the maximum height, you see the cupola goes way above that, and the cupola is not, is it functioning as something other than the-
I would, I mean, I will bring that to the attention of the design, I, you know, as I said, the ARB didn't have any issues with it, but if you have issues with it, I will certainly mention to them. That cupola is, would be set back in a conforming, I mean, the, the front is only partially non-conforming, this garage, it's not like all non-conforming. But if you, if that's an objection as to the cupola and the height, I certainly will bring that back to, to the applicant, as well as Mr. Brady.
It's over the height. Granted, it tells where the wind's blowing, but that's it.
It, it doesn't count, though, and we're not really an aesthetic board.
I'm not talking aesthetics, I'm talking over the height. Why doesn't it count?
Well, you said the overall look does.
Chimney doesn't count.
Yeah, it doesn't.
A chimney is a working, functioning part of the building, you know? I don't know that a cupola is.
Well, if it's, I'm not asking for a variance for it, so if it's not permitted under the code, obviously, they're not going to be able to construct it.
Does the cupola count, Rick, or does it not?
Not sure off the top of my head.
I submit to you, I won't be here for a variance for it, so that if it's not allowed as a matter of right, it will not be put on that building. And, you know, and I will bring it to their attention if you want to, need to come back and address it. I'll bring Mr. Brady here, actually.
It looks to me like it counts, but-
Okay.
That's just from a quick skimming of the code. I don't think we've ever had an issue on that before, that I remember.
Don't recall it coming up.
I, I am not, as I said, I'm not seeking a variance for it, so if it's not permitted, it will not be constructed. And I will bring that to both Brian Brady's attention as well as the applicant.
What the neighbors are saying is that, since it's going to be torn down, you're actually starting with a, an empty lot. And why can't the garage be put in a conforming location? That seems to be their question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm told that because of the area amassing that this works better. And I was also told that if there was serious objection, and this isn't a, he, they, the way they want to develop this property is that this works as a reconstruction. So there's enough conforming locations here to be able to add on and renovate with a house in the existing location and not come before this board for a variance, obviously, because as long as the nonconformity isn't expanded. So what they were saying is that, since they already have a pre-existing right here to, to larger massing at the street front, and the side affecting the neighbor is, is conforming, they're not changing the character of the neighborhood, they are not, you know, creating a detrimental environmental impact, that when you weigh and balance, that they feel that the spacing and the aesthetics, especially since the ARB prefers the- that the spacing and the aesthetics, especially since the ARB prefers the detached versus any sort of bigger massing, that we're balancing here, that the equities certainly warrant them seeking this variance from you.
Rick, do you have any?
No questions.
Anybody out in the audience? Mr. Bregman.
Are you surveying?
Yeah. Well, it's not a survey, it's the architectural rendering.
Eric Bregman, Farrell, Fitz 50 Station Road in Watermill, for three of the neighbors. Rob Vradian and his wife, who live immediately to the south at number 23, in the house he grew up in. Diane Vradian, who has a newer house just south of Robert's house. And the Essays, as you noted, who are one more house to the south.
So those are all the same, those are all the houses on that same side of the street?
There may be one further, there may be one further south, I'm not sure. But I have, actually. One of the things I wanted to give out to you is a series of photos, including an aerial, so we can check on that. Also, if I may, these are copies of the two letters that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, and also Robert Vradian's letter, which I thought he had sent directly in, but apparently didn't get there.
Need one more for Rick.
He gave me one.
Oh, yeah, one, okay.
These letters, Rick? I respectfully disagree with Mary Jane's presentation. This is a very substantial variance. It's 40 percent. It is at odds with and contrary to the character of the neighborhood, and it's not necessary. The front yard setbacks are what set, they're designed to keep the street open, any street. Especially accessory structures are supposed to be further back than the main house to give that open feeling. And as you can see from the first of the pictures that I gave you showing, this is the applicant's house, and you can see St. James Street. It's a very open street. There are not any, there's only one house that's hedged in. Everybody has met the setbacks and all the new construction for both houses and garages. There aren't actually any separate garages on the street. The front yard really sets the character of the streetscape. Gives a sense of openness and a feeling of openness and non-clutter. And that's exactly what is on this street. It's a bucolic, open field of the street. The photos show it best, you probably all know the street, but attached, just under the aerial, you'll see photos looking north and south. And you see, except for the one pre-existing house, goes back a long way, at the corner of Herrick and right across from the applicant, actually, it's all open, set back, almost rural setting, not a village setting. The garage will noticeably change that sense and feel and the character of this lovely street. And that's the concern of the neighbors. There is a claim that Mary Jane made, that this is no worse than what's there, and there's a pre-existing moratorium, a pre-existing nonconforming situation. There are at least four answers to that. First, it's a new house. They're demolishing the old. Under the code, you cannot rely on the pre-existing nonconforming, unless you're building exactly the same house, same height, same footprint, same materials. I went over this with the building department. So if you're building a new house, which is what they're doing, and you're changing that, all right, the pre-existing has no grandfathering benefit at all, which is why they're here for a variance. And the goal of the zoning in 116, I'm sorry, it's 116-1, I think, is to remove nonconforming structures gradually. That's exactly this case. This is exactly the situation contemplated by the code, that when there's a new house replacing an old house in a different position with a different design, that's exactly when the code says you should get rid of nonconformities and bring things into conformity if you can. And here, you can. And there are plenty of ways to do this. One thing is moving the house, also, I mean, moving the garage further west, but you can also move the pool and pool house. They are not at the limit. They can be moved back five feet. If you do that, and you bring this back 15 feet, is one way to do it. Or you could reorient things. What they want to do here is basically to have their cake and eat it too. They want to take advantage of building a new house with all, that entails a new and substantially larger house, and at the same time, take credit for, or grandfather, the pre-existing nonconforming setback. It's exactly what the code says you're not supposed to do. The ARB approval, I think, has a number of answers and responses to. First, it's the ARB's job to deal with architectural harmony within the village and the historic district. It's this board's job, is responsible for zoning and the character of the neighborhood as it's affected by zoning. That's a very different consideration. It's remarkable that until now, anyway, there were no plans in here and no designs of the house, although I gather there are now, but in fact, there aren't any designs of the house, there's only of the garage. So there's nothing to show that the ARB intended to go beyond its jurisdiction and usurp yours and make zoning decisions.
I didn't say that.
Well, you suggested that the ARB said that this was okay, or was a good thing, to have in the inappropriate and nonconforming setback.
Eric, I didn't bring the design drawings for the house.
Mary Jane, please, please, please. Mary Jane, you'll have your chance. You'll have your chance again.
Well, but that's, and thank you, Mary Jane, that's exactly the point. Mary Jane's statement of what the balancing should be is, well, if you don't do this, we'll go back and we'll just rebuild what's there, or reconstruct or expand what's there, and then take advantage of the setback. Well, that's not a balancing. Your balancing was on this variance for this structure, not what might happen otherwise. And if you look at the factors for the variance that you all know about, and forgive me for repeating what you already know, but I think it's very, especially appropriate here. When you do your balancing, number one, undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. At least three of the neighbors think so, and it is, again, contrary to the whole concept of the code, of, as I said earlier, of the front yard setbacks, setting the character of the neighborhood, setting that open space. In this particular street, as you see from the photos, that's exactly what's going on and exactly what would be changed. The code also says, repeating myself, that accessory structure is supposed to be further back than the house and not up front in your face with a garage, you know, busy activity facing the street. All the other garages, by the way, face sideways, don't face the street, on this particular street. Whether the applicant can be achieved, can she the benefit that he wants to or she wants to without a variance? That's exactly the case. I'm repeating myself, there have to be various ways to design this, either taking advantage of the rear yard setback or rearranging things. I mean, we don't, we're not designing somebody else's houses, but it's a brand-new lot. It is, as Mary Jane said, substantially larger than required by the applicable zoning. There's got to be a way for them to build their house and make it conforming. There's plenty of room to do all of that. Whether it's substantial, it's clearly substantial, it's a 40 percent variance. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, this is classic. That's the same thing. They're creating it by what, where they're placing, what they want to do with their new building. So it is almost the platonic form of a self-created variance. And what's really going on, and Mary Jane said so herself, is this is an aesthetic decision. This is a decision by the architect and the owners, and I'm sure they believe it. And I'm not attacking in any way their aesthetic judgment, but it is an aesthetic judgment. It would be too narrow, it would be too crowded if you moved things. I don't know whether you can redesign it, but the bottom line is that it is an aesthetic decision. And aesthetic decisions are not part of the balance. I know you and Sagaponik sometimes have different views of the world, but this is a very recent decision in Sagaponik, where they specifically turned down an application and, and a variance application, and one of the statements in it is, "The applicant expresses in substance, at best, a design or aesthetic preference, which is not a basis for relief under Village Law 712B3." That is the state village law. It's, just for the record, it's the application of Marilyn Arbess, A-R-B-E, excuse me, A-R-B-E-S-S.
There are just the four houses on that side of James Street.
Thank you. I drove by again this afternoon, I didn't count them.
The only one I believe that has a garage would be Diane Vradian's house, and that has a garage, the doors do not face the street.
That's right.
The Rob Vradian house does not have a garage. And I'm not sure about the Essays, I don't think they have one either.
I don't think they do. There's a house on the other side of the street, you'll see that in the photos, that also has, not a detached garage, but an attached garage, also faces sideways, doors face sideways.
Faces sideways.
Yeah. I do not believe there is any other detached garage on the street.
I don't know about the one on the corner directly across the street from number seven, but you can't see that one because of the...
That's exactly right.
And that seems to face Herrick Road anyway, doesn't face James Street.
And again, that's the only house on the block that is hedged in that way. Everything else is open.
Very heavily hedged.
Yeah. So that's the bottom line. They don't need it, there's a way around it. It's contrary to both the letter and the spirit of the law, and there ought to be a way that they could make this work. So if you do, if you do the balancing on this application and on this structure, that balancing, all the factors, except that there's no environmental harm, all go the other way and all militate towards a no.
You have any response?
Mr. Bregman has went, started the, his presentation by saying to you how open and grassy the front yard on James Street is, and how constructing this garage is going to somehow take away that openness. One, I believe that the house currently that's there is at a nonconforming setback all along James Street. In fact, it's noted on the survey, not on this board, but the survey that I submitted to you, so since the house that's proposed is coming back at least 10, if not more, feet, the openness on James Street in that front yard is going to be greater, other than the 520 square feet that's attributable to this garage. And the reason I say that is because much was made that somehow, by having this garage building by itself as a separate building at 29.6 feet, was going to take away and change the character of the neighborhood by taking away that grassy, open feeling along the front of James Street. Well, I think you'll see on the survey, the dotted line, the house that's existing on James Street is closer than what is being proposed now. So actually, we're, the openness is going to, the bulk of the length of James Street is going to be getting greater, other than the area that's attributable to the garage. So I'm not proposing to close up or somehow make the open space and open area on James Street less, it's actually going to get greater where the house is. All right, so, and I only mention that, as I said, because it, the presentation seemed to be that by doing this, I'm going to somehow block that area. The other thing is, is that if you look at the aerial that was submitted by Mr. Bregman, you'll see that the immediate neighbor, which is Mr. Vradian, Rob Vradian's house, it's actually stepped back so that with the garages in the, where we're proposing it, from his place, you can actually see it less than if it steps back, because that goes into his backyard. And that was one of the considerations, is that if, I mean, it's hedged there substantially, there's arboretum on his side, as well as greenery on this side, that the visual was going to go down, and also, just the side was going to go down, because it's further forward from where his house, and it matches sort of his parking area. And that was the consideration as well. I submit to you that certainly the openness isn't going to be changing, and the character of the neighborhood isn't changing, other than it's a detached building. Now, are there alternate ways of doing this? I certainly am going to go back to Mr. Brady, and one of the things that they'll probably consider at this juncture is whether connecting the house to this garage will then, you know, be able to maintain this. Because I believe that it's, the village code says that you can actually construct, reconstruct, provided that the degree of nonconformity can't get, you can't increase the degree of nonconformity. So, I mean, basically, a renovation can be done where if you don't increase the degree of nonconformity, either a mass, height, or otherwise, certainly that this can be accomplished. I mean, the comments that were made were saying that, well, if you do a reconstruction and renovation, you can't grandfather any pre-existing nonconformities at all. That is not the case here in the village, or in, even in Sagaponik Village. And I was there for that presentation in Sagaponik Village, the case that was given to you, which is, was a totally different case. I mean, to say that they said aesthetics didn't matter, I think we're comparing apples and oranges there. That case did not have a pre-existing setback that was existing. I was there for the presentations by David Gilmartin Jr. throughout that thing, and I submit to you, I'm here at the village, there was no pre-existing house on that property, and there were other attendant factors that were involved. It went in many hearings, and there, as here, there were quite a few objections. So I would bring back Mr. Brady regarding the cupola. I will bring back Mr. Brady as far as the aesthetic setbacks. It was said to you that I didn't give you any design drawings until today. Well, I didn't give you any design drawings on the house, because we're not asking for any variances on the house. And... any variances on the house, and as Mr. Farrar mentioned, I didn't think you would be interested. I'm not trying to hide anything. There was a public hearing on this at the ARB, nobody showed up, is my understanding. So maybe, and I know that notices were sent out, so Mr. Brady can address that, but I'm not trying to not show you the design drawings for the house. The only reason that I brought only the floor plan for the garages, that's what's before you for a variance, and I thought you'd be interested in what it looked like. If you want the design concepts being addressed, I think that I'd like to ask for an adjournment because I have, Mr. Brady, it's better to address that than I am.
You're talking about the design of the house itself?
No, no, the, even the garage, as you're saying, orientation, et cetera. The garage doors right now face the street.
Yes, I know.
So, and the, I can't address, when you, I know that the board, this board is the one that's granting the variance. The reason I mentioned about the design is, is because the ARB puts in a lot of input about, you know, various things, as you well know. So I want, and they're not an easy board, so that's why I was...
You're implying that we are an easy board?
No, no, no. That was not, what I'm saying...
We have an easy stamp on our backs?
No, that is not, I mean, that's not what I meant. What I'm saying is, if the design of the garage was a big issue with them, with the doors facing the street, they would have said something, and to my knowledge, they didn't. That's what I was presenting to the board. The other thing is, is that it's saying that the detached garage is an anomaly. The existing code, I can't cite it for a section, really encourages non-detached garages. So to say that that's something that's not desirable, I, you know, I dispute that in the sense of, why would the village code give breaks, for lack of a better word, if you have an accessory garage that's attached? I don't think it's going to be changing the character of the neighborhood, as I indicated to you. There is massing there right now. It is not going to increase the front yard closure because there's more house, and the yard's going to be expanding. However, there are design concerns here as to why, if it's, that it cannot be moved here and there, and as I indicated to you, I think those are better questions to be addressed to the designer here, Mr. Brady, and I will take them all to them so that they can address them, rather than me try to guess as to those things.
Can I say something?
Sure.
How many parking spaces are required?
How many parking spaces are required?
Four.
Four?
Mm-hmm.
That's five bedrooms. So that means there's two parking spaces in front of the garage, meaning that 15-feet car, 17-foot car, I don't know what they are, but now you're 12 feet off the road with the vehicles, one point. Second point, it seems to me that the accessories to this property are dictating the position of the garage. That is, the pool is 40 feet, I gather. If it were 36, if the, that would help perhaps to reorient the poolhouse a little. The spa is on the south side, another, I don't know what, six feet, maybe that could go elsewhere, and maybe then the proposed poolhouse could be moved somewhat to the north. In other words, a lot of these difficulties seem to be dictated by people splashing around and such.
Okay, 36 versus 40, so...
They can actually move the pool and the poolhouse, they can go further west, they have to be 20 feet off the line, right? And they're 24 feet, one's 24.7, the other's 24.9.
Yeah, if they shrunk the pool, they could go north and west.
Yeah.
And then maybe the garage could go back a bit.
I will ask them to broach making, you know, those adjustments.
I think what we, maybe we'd like to see a conforming plan, and see what that would look like.
Okay. I, I mean, I'll take back all your comments to the design, to Mr. Brady, I mean, as well as the client. I'm not innocent. To look at alternatives to make that area work, including conforming locations.
Does the board have anything else? Rick?
No questions.
Out in the audience, do we have any more comments to this application? So we'll go ahead. Oh, this is open for all purposes.
So moved.
Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
All right, good to see you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, you too. Thanks.
Where's that bring us to?
Bishop's Court.
On the application of case number 2802, Jonathan and Gina Miller, 25, Bishop's Court.
I've never done this, I'm not sure we're supposed to get.
I do have one question before you start. You're asking for relief from one street, but you're a corner lot. You didn't ask for relief from the other street.
Well, I don't think I need it.
It's way back from Bishop's Court.
Is it far enough back from Bishop's Court? No.
Oh, way, way back from Bishop's Court, yeah.
No, from North Captain's Neck Lane.
That's what the variance is for, 40 feet from...
From North Captain's Neck Lane?
Yes.
Okay. I stand corrected. Sorry.
Okay. I'm trying to do what says on the piece of paper there, I'm just trying to get the, we're selling the house, and had a whole lot of luck, and they said, well, we're being told if you get this variance for the, to get a small, very small pool back there, it would probably help. So that's what we've been trying to do.
This is a tiny pool.
Very small pool.
How much larger than the hot tub?
And it's...
Still you need.
I'm actually being told that a lot of the people that are looking at this type of house actually don't want a pool, but they just want to be able to say they can have one.
Okay.
So that's why we went through it.
That's true.
And if they ever want a bigger pool, that'll be on their, their discussion here.
So you're supposed to be 50, and you want 40, and there is something to the west of the pool anyway, to the garage there or an outbuilding?
That's the, that's the shed.
Shed?
Yeah.
Right. But effectively, if anybody was looking from North Captain's Neck Lane, they can't see the pool anyway.
No, totally.
Because of the hedging and because of the shed.
Correct, and it's be completely, it'd be completely behind the house, I don't think it goes past the house. Oh, I'm sorry, North Captain's Neck.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir. The hedging is significant, can't even see the road.
You want the pool to be 12 by 14?
Yeah, when I sat with the guys down at the building department, they said, if you don't want to have a lot of problems, this is probably going to be a relatively easy application, and I said, well, that's what I'm liking. So they sat with me, John and Tin, and they sat and figured out what they figured would not be a big issue, asking for 10 feet, I guess. Apparently, there's a few other houses in my neighborhood, one on Fordham, one on corner of Halsey Neck and Hill Street, that had asked for almost the exact same setbacks a couple of years ago, and they actually gave, or last year, they actually gave me examples to bring in, and I don't know where they are. They were, I thought they were in the same folders that I sent out, but apparently they weren't. But I know, I don't know if I'm allowed to say the names, I know them. Personally, I don't have any intention of building a pool, I just wanted the approval.
So as you look at the house from Bishop's Court, it's behind the house.
Yes, sir.
And as you look at it from North Captain's Neck Lane, it's hidden by a shed?
Well, no, the shed, no, the shed will be on the other side.
On the other side of the pool, right?
That's correct. It's hidden by all the hedges.
The hedges?
And it's actually, the road is actually below my property, so if you're walking by there, nine out of 10 people, I don't think you'll even see over the property. The road comes sort of underneath.
Right, yeah, it goes down there.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it.
No problem. Jerry?
No questions.
Anybody out in the audience that haven't heard of this application?
Thanks.
Easy to swim laps.
This is an application for a setback variance to 40 feet from North Captain's Neck Lane in order to permit a proposed 14-foot by 12-foot swimming pool, so it's proposed swimming pool being of minimal size, period. In view of the fact that the subject parcel is a corner lot, comma, in view of the fact that the proposed swimming pool will be located further from North Captain's Neck Lane than the existing house, and further from Captain's Neck Lane than the existing wood deck, comma, and upon considering and balancing all relevant factors in accordance with Section 7-712-B3 of the village law, we find that the requested variance is warranted, therefore, we grant such variance.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to give you this. Actually, keep two things at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. Coming in different colors or something.
Yeah.
Evening for the applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. I have the affidavit as per submission. Before I get into the actual merits of this application, or the point of this application, I want to mention one thing which came to my attention when the application was filed and with subsequent discussions with the building department, and that is that on the survey submitted, there is shown an existing slate patio located on the south side of the building in which is located a spa. That spa apparently received no permission from any agency, and discussed it with my client, that spa will be removed. So that should not be an issue, and in fact, we will note for the record that it will be removed. My client did want me to tell you that although he hasn't done anything in the village recently, he had a similar situation in the town when it was permitted, and he assumed that it was permitted, but it was an honest mistake. Suffice it to say that it will be removed and it will not be an issue. That having been said, this indicated this is an application for a, I guess you'd call it a variance to locate, to allow, to maintain the existing slate patio on the west side of this building, which intrudes into the transitional buffer yard, which is located between the Polo Club condominium and the Land Rover and Jaguar dealership. The lot itself, as you may remember, this is one of the lots on a subdivision known as Gracie's Place, the lot is, contains 47,010 square feet according to the filed map, and the minimum side yard setback in that particular, in the MF district is 20 feet, so the patio conforms with the setback, so there's no question of there being a zoning variance being necessary, nor is there a necessity for a zoning variance setback from Hampton Road. So this is not your traditional variance case, but it is a request to allow this at-grade slate patio to intrude within the transitional buffer yard. Now, I would submit that, as you've seen this analysis before, you may remember in 2011, I appeared in front of you, and you granted a variance to permit a portion of the patio around the swimming pool, excuse me, to encroach in the transitional yard, and there were certain findings that you made in your decision, which was dated September 22nd, 2011, which I gave you in the application package for this application. And it was noted that the purpose typically of a transitional buffer is to protect residences from adjoining commercial properties. Here, this seems to be the reverse. Obviously, the only property owner directly affected by this, the grant of this permission would be the Land Rover dealership, and if you look at the, actually go to the site, look at the aerial photographs, you'll see that what this directly abuts is the back of the building, and it's an asphalt parking lot where they park the cars they're working on. So I would submit that this would have absolutely no effect whatsoever on the neighbor who was, the only neighbor who was really, really affected. I would also note for the record that this is not the original developer, this isn't Farrell or the people who came before him, this is an individual who bought one of the units and constructed this patio, apparently believing that since it met the zoning setbacks, it was, it was appropriate. So I would submit that, given all of the circumstances, this would be a reasonable application, and it would be an application that's consistent with what you've done in the past. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Is it on grade, this patio?
Obviously, I checked the file, and I didn't see any objection from the Land Rover dealer.
No objection from the car dealership?
No, I don't think the car dealership was too upset at me.
Jerry? No. Rick?
No questions.
Gordon?
Hello, my name is Susan Sherry Clark, and I live at 393 Hampton Road, and that's the property adjacent and directly to the east of the Polo Club condominiums, and we live, actually, in the old farmhouse that's been there for 65 years. And I was hoping, no offense, that we would never need to come back to the ZBA to speak, but it seems like the project next door just continues to grow, and that's one of our concerns. We were here in 2011, and here we are again. I think it goes back to, you know, how does the zoning, the buffer zone affect us? When 1989, it was around December, the dealership, as the owner of the dealership, as I understand it, wanted to move the dealership, give or take 50 feet, to the east, so that bumped the driveway into the buffer zone, so they promised to keep the buffer zone in either the R20 or the MF20 districts. So that's how that buffer zone ended up getting bumped over that far. So it really affected our property, and actually, everybody to the east, because the whole dealership with the car service moved closer to us, and so we were affected by the noise and the air guns and, you know, doing the tires, so there was an effect there. So that's how the buffer zone came to be where it was. In 2005, 2006, Gracie's Place was before the planning board, and the property was subdivided into three lots. And I just have a couple of the landscape plans. So actually, you don't just have six condominiums, there are two condominiums on each of the three individual lots. And back when they did the original site plan, and this is actually the landscape plan, there are no patios at all. And we weren't happy with getting the six condos that went on for a couple of years, but we were pleased that there were no patios, until... Until 2011, when the developers started to build the patios, and that's how they ended up coming back to this board. So they got the variance and they went back to the planning board. So they end up getting five additional patios and then a variance for that pool deck patio around the pool. So never thought I'd have to dig my notes out or my maps out again, but here we are again. And this time, actually, the patio was built. It was built in April thirtieth, 2013. And I have a letter that was given later to the property owner. But as the patio was being built on that day, the building inspector, according to the letter, showed up, told them to stop building. And they seemed to understand that they weren't allowed to continue building. And he left. And from what he said and what we observed, they continued to finish the patio. So when I talked to someone at the building department, they said, "Well, it hasn't been grouted and they can't use it." And lo and behold, a few weeks later, the patio furniture arrives, the grill arrives, and they used it all summer. And to me, that's just really a flagrant violation if someone tells you to stop and you finish. You worked to sunset that night, because we live next door, finishing up a patio that you were told to stop working. So it was installed. So to me, it's when somebody comes for a variance or coming for a hardship. Well, if you hadn't violated, there wouldn't be a hardship. So I guess if somebody tells you, "No, you build, you have a patio, you didn't have to grout it, you moved your furniture there." So now they have one patio, and lo and behold, a hot tub appears. And maybe it's going to disappear, but it's actually been sitting on the south side, which is very close to a public bus stop. And there's no fence around it, no fence around the property, a really dangerous situation. So I'm surprised anybody who visited that property, be it a developer, be it anyone, would see that there is a hot tub there. A property manager, I'm not sure who would visit, would see that there's a hot tub sitting there with no fence around it. And I was also told that he checked with somebody from the development, and he was told he could build this, go for it, you know. So to me, there may be some miscommunication, but there's really not a hardship. He not only has the use of his patio, which you gave him a variance for the last time, I mean, excuse me, the planning board, you didn't give him the variance for it, the planning board added it to the site plan after they got the variance here for the pool. But they also can use the pool and the deck around the pool, and you gave him a variance for that. So there's a precedent. We just don't have one condo, we have six. So if six more, five more condos come back, there are five more patios, five more hot tubs, more surround sound, lights, and they have more lights up than they're allowed. But that's beside the point, that's not why I'm here, but it just increases everything. The other thing, when I went to the building department yesterday and I got the list of who would receive the notices, it became apparent that there are a number of people who weren't on that list. And I have actually an old Suffolk County, I dug it out from my old files, the Suffolk County tax map before the condos were built, but you can actually see the three lots on there. Twenty-four-point-six, twenty-four-point-seven, and twenty-four-point-eight, they're three dog-legged lots. And I took my dad's protractor and they had the how many feet, and I gave you approximately two-hundred feet from just the edge of the one lot, which is Fifty David White's Lane. And to me, it looks like there was only one person, and I put red dots for the people who received notices. There was only one person in Canterbury Mews who received a notice. And there are a number of them right across the street there. Oddly, somebody at two-oh-five and one-eighty Potato Field Lane got notices. And also, the village got a notice, which is in that file, that's why the village gets one, because there's a discharge area that the village owns with no residents on it. They got them up in that far corner up there. And I find it odd that people farther away got them, but actually, people closest didn't. But most notably, people in the condo development didn't get them. I saw nothing in there for A.J. McGuffog at B-1, for an R-Cab at C-2, or for SBDWLLC at B-2. I see nothing in there that they received them, and they actually live in that development. And although they posted, pardon?
Where do you live?
Right. That pie-shaped piece of property right there. One-point-nine acres.
The slice, the pie slice.
So it's, it's hard to see the house, but the farmhouse, there's a barn, and there's a little summer cottage in the back. You can see them. That's what Grandma bought. It was, it was farmland when they arrived at that neighborhood, of course, no longer. But these people didn't receive notices. And yes, they were posted, but if you don't, if you don't come out, because you live in a condo, I haven't seen too many people over there, you wouldn't even know about this. So they're posted, but they didn't get letters.
So you're upset that this might set a precedent with other units?
That's, that's more so, yeah, yeah.
Because the way it looks now, you're not even going to see this patio.
Well, I'm not, but I'm saying, we've had to live with a closer garage all those years. Yes, this one in particular, but if they start moving them around near us...
Well, they're going to need variances every time they do it. And with this, I don't see a real problem.
Well, they may not be a variance if they're not closer.
If they don't need a variance, then it's as of right.
But then they have to go back to the planning board for it, but it's still...
Right.
But to me, they didn't even get noticed, to the people who did get to, should be noticed.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, but second of all, I have a question about the ownership. I mean, I'm not an attorney, and I don't know real estate law, but from what I understand, you own a condo, you own the building and the property underneath it. So I don't know...
We've had a condo, and I've had patios outside every one of them.
But, right, but I'm saying that this, I don't know that Neil Joffe owns the land that he, he's building in a buffer zone, a transitional yard. And I don't think that's his property even building. He's the applicant here.
Transitional yard refers to, transitional yard is two different zonings coming from. It has nothing to do with ownership of the property.
I know that, but that, right, it happens to be there, it happens to be, that's why he's coming for a variance.
Right.
But, but he doesn't own necessarily that property.
I would probably have a problem with it if there was a homeowner on the other side of it, but a car dealership, you know, it's like having a sump.
But I'm just saying, he is here as your applicant. And can he, is he the person who should even be applying for this? Because it's not his property...
I guess that's something for Gil to answer.
It's not his property, the way I understand it, to even apply for the variance. It would be whoever owns that property. And it's not him, because he doesn't own it. And maybe he's owned by the condo association. I'm not really quite sure who owns it, but I would say, it's my understanding that Neil Joffe would not be the person owning it. So I'd say that there are notification errors, for whatever reason, people who even live there who might be opposed didn't even get notices.
Would we even address that, or?
Who would address?
I don't know who addresses if people don't get the notices that they're supposed to get.
I'd have to ask that of Gil.
Pardon?
We'll ask that of Mr. Flanagan.
Okay. And also, the fact you have an illegal patio that was built, I mean, someone told to stop, they put it on that property, and they may not own it.
That's why he's here for a variance.
Right, but it's after the fact.
It is after.
Done.
Yes, but we're here to...
Usually, you ask...
This was built illegally, he was told to stop, remove it, or whatever.
And they didn't.
And they did not. And they finished it, and we're asked to give it our blessing now?
Yeah, exactly.
We're always talking about enforcement problems, and we're aiding and abetting lack of enforcement that way.
You and I don't do the enforcement.
A thousand dollars a day?
If they, no, they could be levied, I don't know.
There's a letter there from John.
Said they could have been fined.
He's looking for somebody to tell him what's going on.
That's written in August.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't...
And it took, took from August until November to get here.
Obviously, John has been told when they came in to get the variance, they must have talked to John or told to somebody to build the variance.
They were told to stop constructing.
Yeah, back in August.
Yeah.
But they're here before us in November.
That's, yeah, they finished it, they did not stop constructing.
I understand that.
So we just give our little stamp of approval to that.
Well, we haven't given a stamp of approval, anything yet.
So there's a question with the notification, and I don't know who I'll address with that, but also, there's a proof of ownership, who should actually be applying for the variance.
All right.
Thank you.
Gil, do you have anything to say?
Can I do a couple of things? There was a question about precedent, if you granted, relieved in this particular case, and again, Rick, we're talking about a variance to intrude on the transitional yard. Here's a copy of the, the actual condominium development map, and unfortunately, I don't have extras, but I'm sure you have them from the previous application. This unit is the only unit which fronts on the transitional yard. So none of the other ones would intrude in it, so this truly is a one-of-a-kind case, and I think that should be noted for the record. Second of all, I was approached, I guess in the early fall about this, because my client had received the letter, and of course, we had to get a survey done to show exactly what the thing was. And so we proceeded with due diligence. As I say, my client was under the impression that, having done something similar in the town, he didn't need the kind of permits he needed in the village, and he admitted he made a mistake. So that's why we're here, is to try to clear up the mistake. Now, as far as the notice goes, as you know, the village provides the applicant with a list of the people who need to be notified under the code, and that's what we go by. I see Ms. Sherry Clark is here, so she obviously knows about it. I haven't heard any objections from anybody else who didn't get notice. So I would submit that that really is not an issue.
But if they didn't get a notice, they wouldn't know.
Well, excuse me, I have the floor. One other thing I wanted to submit to you...
My apologies.
Which may be relevant, I did ask my client to get an estimate of what it would cost to take the patio up and remove it and restore it to grade, and I have an estimate here, which I would like to submit for the record. So I think the point is here again, is you have to look at the balancing test. You have to weigh the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the neighborhood. Now, the only objection we've heard is from someone who lives on the opposite side of this entire development. In fact, the building that my client's unit is in buffers Ms. Sherry Clark's property from where this patio is. So there would be absolutely, in my opinion, zero effect, zero negative effect on her totally. So I think that when you take that into account and you do the balancing test, which we heard Eric Gregman talk about before, there's really no detriment to the, to the neighborhood, and in fact, the detriment would be to the owner. Again, no, no setback, I believe, is being required or necessary, it conforms with the zoning requirements. So I would submit that this should be a fairly straightforward case. Now, it's unfortunate that it had its origins the way it did, but as someone on the board pointed out, that's why I'm here, it has a problem, so one of the ways to address the problem is to seek a variance.
What about the issue of the ownership?
To the best of my knowledge, my client has the right to construct it. As you may note, that the other patios that were, that were approved and built are located right outside of the units, so this is no different from any of them.
The other ones did not need a variance, is that correct?
No, some, these did. You may remember 2011, when I came to you, the ones that fronted on Hampton Road, these two, in fact, did need a variance, and you granted variances for them. It's the exact same situation. And that was, that variance was submitted as part of my application.
Well, it's kind of a shame that he went and did it.
It is, and he admits it.
It was out getting the permit.
He admits it.
And that they were told to stop, and whoever was doing it didn't stop.
Right, and again, he wasn't here, he was out of town, so it's not to excuse him, obviously, but he wanted me to make it clear that it was not intentional, that he had other experience in another jurisdiction.
Well, this letter from John Foster dated August, when was somebody, when did somebody get in contact with John, you have any idea?
With John, that I don't know.
Because...
Somebody called me.
He's requesting that someone contact him, and this is August twenty-eighth, almost three months ago.
Right, I'll see if I can find out when I first talked to him. Maybe that would help you. Believe it was in September, late September, mid to late September, I can get you that information. See, I had gotten in touch with...
Well, it would be helpful, so at least we know that some effort was being made to comply with John's order.
It was, yeah, in fact, I have emails from September when I, after I was retained, to get in touch with the surveyors who did the original survey work on the project. I found out there was actually another surveyor who had, Barilsky, who had done the actual survey work as opposed to the engineering work. So that took a while, but, so it was within, I would say, within a couple of weeks of when he got the letter that things started.
Now, here, this, because that was not addressed to your client, it was addressed to the Polo Club. The homeowners association there?
I'm not sure. I think there probably is. I know it was passed on to my client.
Yeah, I assume that whoever handles the association passed it on to him.
It was done with their blessing, you know, that the use of the area was done with their blessing, so far as I know.
Which may have delayed things a little bit anyway, but had to pass through an extra set of hands.
Right, and it did, it definitely came to me in September, so, and it took a while to get, as I say, to find the proper surveyor who had the original survey work, and then the filing deadlines and so forth. So he didn't sit on it for a couple of months. I can assure you of that.
For one thing, the condos that he showed you on the site plan, and it's also shown on, I guess it's the one that I have, those were actually built by the developer, those weren't built by the individual condo owners. Those were built as part of the development and had to go back to the planning board, because any change in a site plan, like the addition of a patio, has to go back to the planning board for approval. So those were built, those were built by the developer, not by the individual, before any of the properties were sold. And also...
It makes any difference.
Well, I don't know, he just said that they, they were, it's just the same case, they built those, but actually, it was the...
The patio's the same case.
But the developer owned all the property at the time.
Who built them really doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, but the developer owned all the property at the time, whereas this fellow only owns a portion of whatever, I'm not quite sure. And also, you know, the point was, as he said he complied with John, that he was told to, the workers were told to stop, and supposedly, somebody told them to continue, and I don't know who had that at the time.
Yeah, we have that right in John's letter.
Yeah, right. So I guess, I wouldn't have opposition, they're going to have to go back to the planning board anyway, so it'll be renoticed for the planning board, for the site plan.
It'll have to go back to the planning board.
But, I mean...
Go through this all over again.
So the point being that, you know, if I would get something in writing, that they would not be building any more patios and any of these additional things, that has nothing...
I don't know whether you can get something in writing, they're not going to build any more patios. If they're going to build a patio that needs a variance, they'll come back to us.
Right.
If they're going to build a patio that doesn't need a variance, they'll go to the planning board.
Build the patio.
Build the patio.
Now, that has to go back to the planning board for the site plan, though. I mean, that, because...
But they don't need a variance.
Doesn't need a variance, exactly. So...
We won't see them if they don't need a variance.
Hopefully.
We only see the ones that need a variance.
I got that.
Okay.
But I'm here, but also, I think proof of ownership is, maybe it's the condo association should be applying for it. I don't believe that Mr. Joffe owns the property that he built on, and I think that really should, ownership should be cleared up, who the appropriate applicant is.
We should ask the applicant's attorney to address the issue of, I call it, an issue of standing. I'm not familiar with all of, I don't remember all of the details. This was first a subdivision map, and then there were multiple dwellings built, and I don't think that this issue has ever come up before in the context of this property, so we should ask the applicant's attorney to address it.
You're so asked.
I can't tell you what the answer is without knowing all the facts.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to hear of this application? Anything from the board further?
Just noting that it's seven thousand dollars to remove five hundred square foot of Bluestone. I'd do it for a lot less than that.
Well, I'll go over there with you tomorrow and do it for half that price.
Three grand.
Bring a pick and shovel, bring your truck.
No problem, we could sell the Bluestones.
We'll have it out of your butt tomorrow night. Yeah, I saw that number.
Goes on like that.
Just for the record, I told my client to give me a real number, I said, "Don't give me an inflated number." So I'm not a contractor, I can't tell you that.
So we're going to adjourn this for all purposes.
So move.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Before we lose track of it, why don't you go back and call the Stopnick case?
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me. Is there anyone here for case two-seven-nine-five, Matthew Stopnick, Forty North Main Street? Nope.
I guess we should just adjourn it, give them one more chance to show up.
There's a no-show on it.
We adjourn that Stopnick application.
I second it. One favor?
Aye.
Where are we?
Lake Forest.
2804 Lake Forest Holdings, LLC, 291 South Main Street. Good evening, John. Can we get up?
Good evening. The applicant, John Bennett, 212 Linnell Lane, Southampton. I have the affidavit of posting and mailing. And, well, just from a overall point of view, just familiarizing with this application. It's an existing house, owns on Lake Agawam, and the application is to put a garage 35 feet from the southerly property line, which conforms, but 35 feet from the easterly property line, which would run afoul of two limitations. One is the general accessory required setback for this area. Although it's a nonconforming lot, it's a lot of about two acres in a three-acre zone, nevertheless has to, under the code, meet the required setback for an accessory structure. And also, it runs afoul of the prohibition against accessory structures in the front yard. This is the front yard of the property. You can see how the building is placed at 80 feet. I just, and I apologize, I didn't get this in for the work session. Diane in the office, when I handed it in the morning after the work session, said I wish you'd gotten the stuff to me beforehand, but that's when it was first available. The new survey that you have, I noticed, the only difference between the survey that you ha-- that I gave to-- gave to the board on November 20th, when is that? Is that yesterday? Is that today?
November 19th was the work session. Today's the 21st.
21st.
21st. It was, I'm sorry, yesterday. I dropped it off. The only difference between the survey that I dropped off yesterday, I have copies for everyone, and the survey that was part of the application, is that I noticed that Squares and Holden hadn't dimensioned the garage. So I thought you'd want to have that information. And that information I obtained from-- Squares and Holden and I obtained from Brian Brady's elevations, which are the-- one of the other, one of the other things that I dropped off the day before, I guess it was yesterday. So you have the dimensions and what the garage looks like. There's reduced copies of the plans, of the plans in there. And then finally, I, the other thing that's dropped off yesterday were 10 copies of email by the budding neighbor, Charles Stevenson, in support of the application, although Mrs. Stevenson is here this evening and may want to modify, amend, supplement, or say something about the application.
Do we have that letter here?
Yes, you have the letter, but I do, the Stevenson family, for all my life and being very fond of them, I did, I thought it very important that I note that Mrs. Stevenson is here, and she may want to have some additional things to add. So, the, when you drive down, as I hope you have been able to drive down to this site, you can see, even though it's far from meeting the 90-foot accessory setback requirement, it, this is where the garage belongs. Certainly, you wouldn't put it to the west, because you wouldn't put a garage in between the view of the house and Agawam. It also maximizes the setbacks to the wetlands, so it seems to be the most commonsensical place. It's also not terribly violative of the character of the neighborhood, and I think that's one of probably the most important element that you look at. This is an area, it's the older area of the village, and there are often many, many, many nonconformities, because of a lot of, a lot of older buildings that were built well prior to zoning, even though zoning was in, in fact, in the '30s, some of these older structures down here predate that. So you'll see on the, you can see that the structures to the east, some of them only are able to achieve a two-foot and one-and-a-half-foot setback. So accessory structures that would not meet current and more modern zoning requirements are not unusual in this area. One can argue about why the code section prohibits accessory structures in the front yard, but I think the primary ill that's, that section seeks to remedy is the effect of having accessory structures in a front yard from the street view. Indeed, the code section itself says that the accessory structures have to be a certain distance from the street, although I understand, and it makes sense, why the, why the building department, and I'm not arguing with it, the building department defines street to be the front yard. But this is approximately 400 feet from South Main Street, and the person that is most affected by it has given a letter of support. And although, again, Mrs. Stevenson here is here and might want to add, supplement, modify, or amend some of that. So in terms of the benefit, we have the applicant wishing to put the garage in an area that makes, is the most commonsensical point of, most commonsensical area, particularly in relation to the fact that there are wetlands on the properties. Also, trying to be kind to the neighbor to the east, because garage located to the northerly part of the property, although it probably could squeeze in and meet, just meet some of the wetland setbacks, would, not only would have to go over the existing septic system, which would potentially create a problem, this septic system may or may not have been designed as a load-bearing system. I doubt that it was, since it wasn't, there wasn't any requirement for it, but it also would affect the view of the neighbor to the, to the north. North, east, northeast, thank you. I don't see any, it doesn't appear to be any visual zoning or economic impact to it. It's not a substantial variance. Again, 450 feet from South Main Street, so there's no impact, a visual impact on the community as a whole. And it's, let me make sure there wasn't anything else I wanted to add. No, I think that's, that's pretty much it, unless the board has any other questions. There are Brian Brady plans that were submitted. You can see that the garage conforms to the height requirement, I guess, subject to that discussion you had prior, was it Mary Jane's application about the--
Kupola.
Kupola, Kupola, Kupola? I always stumble over that word.
Kupola, I think.
But yeah, we're about fif-- it's 15, 15 feet four from the grade. And the kupola is, the kupola probably, I would suggest, does not meet with the 16-foot height requirement, unless, of course, this were in a flood zone. But in which case, you take it from the base flood elevation. But if that is, creates a problem, we could, of course, have that removed. I just, I don't, I understand why you want to be very, very cautious and hesitant about front yard relief, but I think you have a different situation where you have wetlands--
And the water, too.
And the water, and you're 400 feet from the, from South Main Street. And again, subject to what Mrs. Stevenson has in terms of comments, I don't think there's, anyone seems to be distressed or impacted.
Doesn't seem to change the neighborhood any.
No, this, again, these are, these buildings are pretty much right on this. And if you drive in, when I first, when I first had the application described to me, it was a 35-foot front yard setback for a garage. And then I drove into this, and when you see the way it sits on the property, and you see the actual location of the property, it doesn't seem to be much of a harm to anyone. So, but I'll leave it in your good hands, and I know--
Do we have any comments?
Would you just check--
Gee, the last couple of other weather things.
Gil and I were reading the code back there. I think it has to be a, if it's a public or semi-public--
I saw the provision that says, talks about it being on a public or semi-public building, then it's not subject to height. But that, which means that it is here, unless there's some other--
Unless he has some--
So, if it-- I'll follow up with the building department. You know, we're not gonna make an interpretation on an issue that we've never dealt with before.
No, I understand. And if John has an issue, we could, it'll go away, because you'd be kind enough to grant this relief. I'm certainly not gonna ask for a relief for a kupola.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to have heard of this application? Yes, please come up.
I'm Mrs. Charles Stevenson, and my husband, I didn't know he actually sent the letter in writing, but he asked me to come tonight, just because I had a, I just had a couple of concerns about the garage. We live here, we're full-time residents. 35 feet from, I understand, we're very friendly neighbors. We want our neighbors to be happy. 35 feet is awfully close to where I play with my four- and five-year-old sons. It's where our pool is, where we spend a lot of our summertime days. So I just want to make sure that it's not a giant garage, which it's not. And I was just concerned about the height, because the house, which they built, actually does completely obstruct our view of Lake Agawam. So I was slightly concerned, like, you know, it's great for them to be kind to the neighbors to the north and not obstruct their view, but that's their, her father's house. So I was kind of like, hmm, maybe, you know, I don't know. Doesn't have to be so close to our house, and he's got like a little one-story obstruction of view. I don't know. It's something to think about. My other concern, and we clarified this, and I'm sure that the applicants will abide by the laws of the town, but from what I understand from caretakers, et cetera, and from conversations with the owners, I mean, this is built in many, for many purposes, as a rental house. And the garage is being built in part to satisfy the requirements of the renter for the next two years, who has a Tesla, which is an electric sports car, which does require a high-power wall connector. And I just want to make sure, if the garage is built 35 feet from where I play with my little boys, that obviously there won't be any electrical overload, you know, like from there to there, near or something. So, bottom line is, we support our neighbors, we're very friendly, but, you know, use your best judgment, and that's fine, and it's all great. And I want to also say, you guys do an amazing job. It's, it's 10 o'clock, so thank you very much.
Well, what specifically would, if you had your way, would you like to see?
I mean, I, in an ideal world, I don't want to disagree with my husband. He wants our neighbors to be happy. I agree with him. But if I were speaking on my own, I would ask them to possibly consider not placing the garage so close to, you know, our recreational and living area.
Mm-hmm.
But I, but I understand. And I do, I'm, I would be concerned about anything that a kupola or any sort of roof feature that could look over a hedge into our pool area, which is, and has been for 25 years, a private play space. So 16 feet, I mean, 16 feet is like--
I'm gonna suggest, if I may, why don't we just, why don't we, we'll just take the kupola off. That's gonna cause some distress. There's no need for it. I don't, I, even if John has a different interpretation, I don't see it, I don't see it as being excused from the 16-foot height limitation on the code. So why don't we just remove it?
That, that's great. That is worrisome to me, but, yeah, in general, that's one of my basic. It's like, hmm.
And if I may, I'm sorry, but I can ask about, I'll make an inquiry about the electrical charging system--
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I'm sure, I'm sure they won't do anything inappropriate. Yeah. That's all.
Some fire extinguishers in there, too.
Yeah.
Does the Tesla's burning up?
Yeah, thank you.
The Teslas are going on fire somewhere.
But thank you for your time.
Just three.
All right, thanks.
Think we can adjourn it for decision?
Want to move that?
Ah, some of it.
Second. Adjourn it for decision. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. D E C.
No, it can't be it. We got something else. That's the mega one on the floor through the yard, through to Fordham.
You want one more?
Yeah.
On the application, case number 2796 Jasper Rose LLC, 60 Halsey Street. It looks like there's anybody here. They asked that this be put at the end, because they have another meeting to go to, I believe.
They're here.
No, I mean, is the applicant here?
Oh, okay.
Is the applicant here?
I think you should adjourn it.
We'll have to adjourn it. The applicant's right here.
Could I possibly speak in that we waited and--
Well--
Let her, let her speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, speak.
All right. I'm Nan Adams. I live at 79 Fordham. I wanted to give you copies of what I submitted, pictures and information on the September Architectural Review Board, when they, the people of Jasper Rose or their attorney approached the Architectural Review Board and actually stated to the building department that, oh, it was just an architectural matter. We're just moving the doors from not facing Halsey to facing Fordham. And this was what was presented to both, both the building department. And I, and then I went down to the building department, because I said, gee, that doesn't make any sense, because what was approved by the zoning board--
They came before us last month. They asked that it be put back by the pool house.
Pardon me?
They asked that the garage be put back nearer to Fordham Road.
But that was not what was presented--
That's not what they told the ARB?
That's not what they told the ARB, but they saw it on the survey. What was told to people coming in, asking what was happening in the building department, they said, oh, it's no big deal. They're just changing the doors. They're not gonna face Halsey. They're just gonna face Fordham. And I asked them, please, can you get out the original that was approved by the zoning board? There were several variations that--
The one that was approved is up by the main house, the doors facing Halsey Street.
Correct.
The one that they showed us last month was way in the back of the lot, towards Fordham Road, and we told them, I don't know whether you're here or not, go back to his client and tell him that what we approved is what we really want.
Oh, I was not aware there was another meeting. I missed the meeting.
They came here last month, yeah.
And we didn't like the fact they were moving, told you all.
Well, thank you very much.
In fact, we read all those letters that we got from--
And this is the same, I just want to give you a copy of what I presented to the Architecture Review Board, because I thought it was impacting. And you have, I think, five letters--
Yes.
--from the Fordham Road, and we're very, very much against it, and I'm sorry that I--
We got the message that you were against it, all right. There wasn't too much of doubt in those letters.
No doubt, no doubt. Anyway, but thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry I--
And as I say, they called the building office today and asked that the meeting be put at the very end of the agenda. I guess they had some other obligation, or they had to go to another meeting.
You know, they're, possible that their attorney has a matter before the town zoning board.
It could be, yeah.
Also, there is another issue on, it's kind of like trying to nail jello to a wall. The, there was a stipulation, well, number one, the parking pad was approved because the grandparents were going to help with the children, and the house is in contract, is the rumor. So that's, that's thrown out the board. And then they wanted to put a driveway and a parking pad. So it got very complicated. And there's supposed to be a, what's it called? Providence, not Providence, on the property, covenant on the property that states that it cannot be subdivided. And that has not been filed after all this time, and there's a contract--
They have submitted a draft covenant. We're waiting for this application to be concluded before, before we, before that covenant is implemented.
Okay.
I mean, the condition is there. It can't be further subdivided.
Okay.
But the filing of the covenant, you know, we want to be able to, if the board denies this application, then they'll have to file the covenant pursuant to the original grant, because they have relocated the, they got the accessory building. So they, they will have to complete that before a CO is issued.
And if you look on the two surveys--
We're, we're fully familiar with the situation.
Well, it's grown 100 feet, the 100 square foot, the little cottage, is now 100 feet bigger than it was, and it has a six, six-foot crawl space that now has a staircase down to it.
Did the ARB know that, that, that--
I had no idea.
Historic building was altered, is that what you're saying?
Uh, well, I'm-- Well, all I'm saying is on the survey, Christine, is that correct?
We don't, just so you know, ma'am, we don't deal with Architectural Review Board issues. The only issue that's before us is a variance for the proposed location.
Correct. The only reason I mentioned the Architectural Review Board, 'cause it was presented to them under less than forthright, whatever.
Very good.
But it is, it is bigger. If you look on the survey, the little shed is, all of the maracas are gaining under the fence.
This meeting of the Southampton Village Board of Zoning Appeals is over. Adjourn.
Done.